There we go. All right, I'd like to call meeting of the Prattville Planning Commission to order. Mr. Staffenopoulos? I'll move it away. That work? Mr. Staffenopoulos, can you call Rome?
Mayor Gillespie? Councilman Bowles? Chairman Smith?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Gardner? Chief Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Carpenter?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Yeah.
Mr. McCauley?
Yeah.
Mr. Nelson?
Here.
Thank you. All right, we received minutes in the mail and plus, I believe, or I got an email of the minutes. Are they also in here somewhere?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna give everybody its chance to look at them real quick. And then I will entertain a motion to accept them as soon as you look at them. Or correct them. Yes. Minutes are not in here. They're on my phone, but do you wanna?
She has not been in the habit of putting them in the book.
Okay.
For a while, but if we need to start doing that, we can.
All right.
But they are not in the book.
Has anybody reviewed them? I have, and they looked fine to me, so, but do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I saw movement, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a second? One second. All in favor? See if I read it. Opposed? Like some? Okay. We have, uh, new old business. We have new business of Glenbrook subdivision phases four through seven. Mr. Duke? You wanna enlighten? We got the right? We gonna read it in first? Or we wanna, um, discuss it? No public hearing? All right, you can read it in for me. Thank you. Correct them.
Resolution sketch plan revised Glenbrook subdivision phase four through seven, August 21st, 2014. Whereas Stone Martin Builders is the developer of Glenbrook subdivision phase four through seven. And whereas the proposed development is located outside the city limits at the south side of Old Ridge Road, west of existing Glenbrook subdivision flats one and two. And whereas the initial sketch plan was approved on May 16, 2013, as Glenbrook subdivision phase three through six, endorsing the realignment plan of Old Ridge Road. And whereas the city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed development. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted revised sketch plan of Glenbrook subdivision phase four through seven. So moved.
Thank you, sir. Now, Mr. Duke, what do you?
Sir, um, Mr. Smith, if I could, I would, I think it probably best if the applicant would present the reasons for their
That will work.
Their revised sketch. Uh, I don't wanna try to speak for them, but I'd be glad, more than happy to answer any questions. Provide staff.
Mr. Rice? What you got?
Uh, excuse me, I don't have an easy.
That's all right. You got one right there.
I think it's probably big enough we can put on the ground. I'm just gonna jump. Um, excuse me. I think everyone has seen this a couple of times already. This is the Glenbrook master plan. And what we have done is made a modification. The, uh, the original master plan had the park area located in this vicinity right there. And what we assumed is a wooded area down here that would also work just as well for a park area and actually has a little stream running through it. Serve two purposes, obviously. It's less developable, but it's also less developable from a sewerage standpoint. And we propose to take the park off the main road down here and put it in this area right here. Um, it's a, it's an eight acre park, has a frontage along, this is, I cannot remember the name that we ended up naming that street. Has frontage along these two sides. And we had proposed these, uh, these lights right here to back up to it. I know there, other than that, there are very, very minor changes to roadway layouts to accommodate the new layout in this area. Minor changes to the interior roadway layout. Lot counts are, you know, essentially the same. Not a lot of change to the property. I did receive comments, um, from planning staff regarding two items. One was the, uh, planning staff said it was a little difficult to tell if this block between this intersection and this intersection met city standards. And I have verified that city standards is 400 feet block, intersection, intersection. And this, this block is actually 430 feet long. So I did, I did check on that. It's just a little difficult for them to be able to scale it at such a, on such a niche drawing. The other item that I received comments about were these four lots right there. And Stone Martin intends to have this, this, this lot line right there is essentially this stream that comes down through here. And Stone Martin proposed to develop the property on this side of the stream up to some type of buffer between the edges of stream to make sure the entire stream is on the park property. And those, uh, those lots have been put there accordingly. And I believe city staff has a, uh, has a different opinion of what the use of this property right there should be. But it is, it's extremely difficult to develop a job. Anybody else? You sure? Um, it's extremely difficult to develop a piece of property like that and have that park eat up so much road frontage. We, we really felt that it was a more than adequate, uh, amount of frontage. Seeing as how you have a great deal, I mean, this is essentially 400 feet and this is 500 feet of road frontage that's being built right now. As well as you've got additional green space down in here. Albeit that green space is a little less usable because the topography does start to, uh, to come together right there. And, you know, the creek, creek widens out and becomes, you know, really a really nice, real creek right there. But it does, this is all green space proposed for the development. Stone Martin intends to utilize this to the greatest extent possible. Hopefully some walking trails interior to their own green space. And this part, this new park location, you know, kinda plays into that. We really believe it would be a, you know, a nice overall amenity. So, uh, really, I, I believe the only, the only issue is the matter of those four lots backing up to the park.
Any questions for Mr. Rice? The, uh, I like road front, complete road frontage myself. Yes. The, the four lots. Taking out the four lots and having the, the three. You know, it is moving, we've moved the park two or three times.
As far as moving the park, I, I, I think the location myself is probably, in my opinion is, is probably a good spot because it'll be less busy for faster traffic. So I think that location is acceptable from the regards of safety of children, uh, you know, the roads and things like that. So I'm, I'm good with that on that regard. Now, I guess the debate still is on the size and other stuff.
Right, the four lots and the four individual lots. I'm great with the park being where it is myself. But it's, um, when you, you have the park backing up to houses, sometimes you do have issues when there's a park and then there's the, the, the lots going back there and then you've got things happening. And it would be nice to have it completely parked without the four lots.
And, and make no mistake, we agree.
Yeah.
That is a very difficult undertaking. Each and every foot of this roadway is expensive.
Uh, uh, I know.
I know it's not the commission's, you know, function to discuss finances, but, you know, in this situation, it has to be brought up. It's a very difficult undertaking for, for a development like this to, to take a piece of property, pay for the property, give it to the city, and then have to build streets three, on three sides of it.
Yeah. Well, we, we
Much difficult about that?
We understand that.
We understand that.
From our, and the bank usually has a problem with that.
And I under, but it
But we knew it was gonna be ten acres.
How, we, it, it, it would not, it, it needs to be done.
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, just, can you show us where the stream is again? How? I know we're talking about green space over here, but I still haven't really quite figured out what all we can, how we're gonna utilize this green space.
We can't.
And then up in here, you know, where, where's the stream? Because
It would be right about there. Somewhere in that vicinity right there.
Go ahead.
With that being said, if you've got a stream that runs down through there, how is, i- if you make that road frontage part of the park? I mean, you've got a piece of park that how you
Well, I'm nice and
Separated by a stream.
By a stream, yeah.
You know, so I
Hmm.
And that was, that was some of our thought process was to make sure the stream was wholly on the park. But then, you know, it's different than just having an open field and then having houses backing up.
Right.
You know, it gives you some type of, some type of clear line of demarcation to the edge of the park.
You also can have a bridge and a nice little area that goes over it and have the whole area as park.
Is there any compromise, like maybe taking one of these lots and moving it over here or something? You know, is there any kind of compromise between the, the two? To give it more visibility, more usefulness, uh, because I mean, we want everybody to be healthy, not only financially, but physically too.
And, um, Under our current plan, um, what we, in some of doing, some of the thought process of doing this, was the fact that to sewer that piece of property on this side of this creek, it would, um, you had two options. And we proposed to have a regional lift station down in this portion right here, right there. And should we need to, actually, right there, we can do it. But this portion right there would be much more difficult to actually get sewer to. So what we had decided to do, our original plan was to run sanitary sewer all along this creek bed. And instead, we've, we proposed to run it all in the road and have a regional detention facility here. So, really, the, the creek right there, with the exception of a little portion right there, um, the creek is really the, the line of, you know, resistance from a sanitary sewer standpoint.
I, I may be a man out, but I'm okay with it.
Now, I believe, um, Mr. David Avent
Yeah, Dave, come on.
Address the conditions as well.
Yeah, come on.
Mr. Chair?
Be the same, man, if you can.
It's same.
You got another take?
I think, I think I do. I got ten.
All right. There you go. Thank you, sir.
I'm David Avent, I think most of you know me. And I'm speaking from a landowner's standpoint. Uh, this property is owned by my brother and I, Larry. Oh, we have been involved with Blake as he has come back and forth. Y'all hadn't been to the, uh, meetings, but he, but he's kept us abreast of what's going on. And these four lots are kinda important to us. We are making a donation of eight acres to a park. That's eight acres that will not be put into lots. And that would convert to 20 lots. Mr. Nelson knows what I'm talking about. And it, it's a substantial amount to us. We are not aware that many other subdivisions in this town make that kind of donation. Uh, we look at our peers out there. River Chase North, they developed all their land. Hollybrook developed all their land. Highland Ridge developed all their land. But we agreed, eight, it needs to be a park and it would be nice. And so eight acres, we, we agreed on the front end and we think that's fair. Uh, we are not involved in the development of the streets and all that. Blake's been addressing that with y'all. But we, we feel where the park is and with the location of the streets, the proposed eight acres with, with four lots backed up to it is a reasonable approach to this. And we would request y'all to give consideration to us as landowners that, uh, enough is almost enough. And that's what I'd like to talk to you about. I think y'all, uh, see it right here and be glad to ask, answer any questions.
Okay. I'm not a developer, so just bear with me. If they put, if they took the four lots and moved two over here and two on this side, and you would still have the lots, is that developable property on these two corners?
This?
This corner and this corner? Is that?
This isn't.
None of that's developable?
None of it's developable.
What about this side?
I mean, it, it is developable if we go back to our old plan.
But we're talking about the money?
Yes.
Okay, nevermind. Thank you.
Thank you for listening to our concerns. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Tonight. Are there any other questions for Avent or for Mr. Rice? Yes, ma'am.
The 20 lots that supposedly could be put on this municipal park, that would be very costly to develop with, with the creek there, right?
No, ma'am, not so much. The, there is actually room. Our original plan
Yeah, I'm, I see it.
It actually had a roadway coming up through here. Um, and if you, if you utilize the, the entire park area, then running sewer to it is much more feasible. Because you are, you are getting 20 lots there.
The backside, Mr. Chairman, backside of the, of the proposed park, are those lots already built?
These, uh, they are not 100% constructed. They are approved and under construction now.
But those lots are sold on the backside?
These, they are still owned by Stone Martin, they're under construction.
Okay. And the individuals buy them or Stone Martin?
Right.
Any other questions?
Uh, I do.
Yes, sir.
This was to be held for, till our next meeting. Would that interfere with y'all's plans? Would that give enough time to see if there's some other workable solution?
It would not be terribly inconvenient. Um, in, in this situation, we've had, we've had many other situations where a tabling of a, of a, of a project would be terribly, terribly, uh, time consuming from a, from a timeline standpoint. That would not be the case on this one. It would really not hurt the project too much.
Because I guess, you know, my belief is that, and we all need to be good stewards of, of everything, whether it's money or land, you know, and so forth. And, and to me personally, green space, you know, parks are very, very important. Uh, the canoe trail back here, the walking, um, uh, creek walk, um, you know, all that's very, very important because, as I mentioned earlier, we need everybody to be financially healthy, but also mentally and physically healthy too. And, and, um, I saw the plan from previously, you know, you had houses there and, and, um, I guess I never picked up on that creek going through there for some reason or another, even though after looking at it, I can't see where it does go through there. But, um, I also wanna make certain that whatever, because eventually the city's gonna have to accept this. And I wanna make certain that it's something that we can easily maintain and is gonna be enjoyed in a, in a very useful manner by all, all involved. So, I don't know if
Well, and along those same lines, I have, I have spoken with Stone Martin extensively about this. And, you know, they're, they did have some thoughts to, you know, this is really not the, not the place to present it because it can't be finalized. Um, that would essentially have to go through council. But their, their thoughts were to, um, were for Stone Martin to actually participate. Um, don't know when the city, you know, we, we give this land, but when would the city touch it? You know, is it this year? Is it next year? Is it 10 years from now? Before the city actually turns it into something that's, you know, readily usable for the town? Um, and it was going to be our proposal that Stone Martin actually participate in that. And in, with the development, go ahead and, you know, get it cleaned up. Make sure the, you know, make sure that it's, it's good old growth timber in there. Maybe, maybe install some walking trails and, you know, things of that nature. Some type of, you know, small amenity structure, something, something. Um, just simply because if not, you know, there, there's no real timeline as to when it would be put forth as, as a park. You know, until, until the city was to, was to do something with it, it's just vacant land. That, you know, until there is some type of something there, nobody's gonna visit it anyway. So.
I don't know if this is the best place to ask a question. But have y'all considered developing that eight acres? Put the 20 lots on it? Take the profits off that 20 acres, 20 houses? Put them, put it in the green space? Because you take that money, the exit saves 10,000 a lot. That's a lot of money. And develop all the useless land. Have y'all even thought about that?
This, this property shown as part of the green space for the development, it is, make no mistake, it is
Rough.
It's, it's undeveloped from a single-family residential standpoint. It is Stone Martin's intention to get down there. Now, we have detention facilities in it, which means it is workable. We're gonna have to redo some of those. There are some serious slopes, almost cliffs, down in this area right in here. And Stone Martin intends to rework some of that anyway and it actually incorporate their own green space and walking trails and whatever we can. Get a landscape architect involved and figure out what can be done. Because there are portions, you know, I have stood right here. And where those two main creeks come together. And that, that's one of the prettiest places I've ever stood in my life. Um, I mean, it, it's, it's actually really beautiful down in here because it's, I mean, it's low, flat land. And there's a lot of it, you just can't get to it with a vehicle. Um, the only way to get to it would be to, you know, come down there. It's, it's not developable from a single-family standpoint.
Well, I was just saying maybe walking trails, put bridges in. Sort of like they did out in, um, I don't know if you've ever been out to the park in Auburn? That's Tuskegee National Park?
Chihuahua.
Chihuahua. It's, they put all these real nice bridges in, made walking trails everywhere.
It's actually, you know, separate from this issue. Stone Martin intends to create an amenity site for, you know, private, to their own residents down in this area. Because it was, I understand, and the city was not, you know, that was our original proposal was to, you know, the, be all of this to the city. Now, I mean, truthfully, city doesn't wanna maintain it. I mean, we all know that.
Definitely don't wanna.
And actually utilize this with some walking trails and, you know, larger amenities. And city staff, you know, intimated to me, that, you know, that is good. We love that y'all are doing it, but we do want a public park. So we're, we're actually intending to do, uh, a good bit of that on our own for Glenbrook residents.
How much of that would you be willing to put in writing?
I, I imagine most of it.
All right.
And I, I guess I, I can come to that, you know, I'll, yeah, give you the four lots, put something in writing about what you're gonna do with all the green space.
All right. Would it be, uh, would it be easier to
You'd have to make Mr. Duke over there happy. He's not happier than me, but, you know.
Would it be easier to table this item and try to work on that?
Let's get Mr. Duke's idea on this real quick. But I think tabling is, is on the table.
I'm just gonna add a little bit to, um, background. Most of this you've already covered, so I will, uh, try to, to be selective in what I'm gonna say. You know, the, the concept of park goes back to your comprehensive plan. It's an adopted idea about having that for this quarter. This, this subdivision basically takes up a very large area north of 14. Okay? And I will certainly agree with the, Mr. Avent, that you have, you being planning commissioner of this city has allowed a great many developments over the last decade and a half without the provision for green space. Uh, that, that provision kinda stopped with, um, latter phases of, um, Surway Hills North, uh, Brookstone. You started looking at where you needed park space. Even as far back as 1996, it was recognized that there needed to be some green space, for instance, in Highland Ridge. There is green space. It was not done in an organized fashion like we really like it to be. It's, it's available, but it's also doubles most of the time as a detention area. It's just a very shallow detention area. But it is green space. The idea of this park was to create a space that was o- open to the public, that was accessible to the public and met the guidelines that you've kinda come to accept based on previous experience. Overlook Memorial Park is probably the first one that was put in. It has a, a very narrow, I would say, no more than about 200 feet, maybe 300 feet worth of width that touches J Street. But there's about, you know, eight acres there behind it that you can barely see. And we, the city from a maintenance standpoint suffers, uh, because it doesn't have very good visibility. It is probably, uh, one of our higher vandalized parks. You can get off in there at night. There are houses that back up to it, but they don't have good visibility to it. Contrast that with East Poplar, uh, Jasmine Trail Park, which has houses that look right on the property. Okay? There's only a couple of places where people back up to it, and that's because this was kinda, it was a late compromise. Ideally, you would've had that park go all the way through to River Chase and front on that, that street as well. So what you ended up with in 19, in last year with this plan that currently exists, that you approved, was a good layout. It had, has good road frontage, has good visibility, good access. It doesn't feel isolated. What's being proposed is a, an area that, um, is not prime property. I mean, that's clearly been stated that this is land that is not easily developed and not economically developed. So this is land that we're kinda taking and, and since we can't develop it easily, we'll, we'll make that the park. And the city has seen that for years. Uh, when I first came here in, in 1996, we were having a debate about a piece of property that Aaronoff Development wanted to give you off of Corningate Drive. On a flat piece of property, I mean, a flat piece of paper, it looked great. In reality, it was a, uh, difficult piece of property to develop even as a park. The reason that it was left out, it was a, difficult to develop for much of anything. So we need to be very mindful. I think the idea of looking at it closely is a great idea. You, you need to envision this park with fences backing up to it because that's what you would end up with. Lots here on the west, lots on the east are gonna be backed up with privacy fences to this. So that will be your, your wall of border. But you're either gonna have to screen off to improve the visibility. But you also have the potential of, hey, I don't like having that park in my backyard. Can't you get those people to be quiet? Um, city council hear that, mayor's office hears that. Uh, you, you need to think about that park as a place that needs to be inviting and, and folks are able to use it for years. Because what we're looking at is a, is a green space that transcends the developer. Okay? After, everybody forgets that this is Glenbrook and they just know it is Glenbrook Boulevard, intersection of some other street. And this is the neighborhood I live and this is the neighborhood I live in, that that's when you want it to to be a great space. So I I think it is really healthy to look at, um, this in context. I I would think it would be great to to visit the site, have some pictures of the site, understand the topography, what this is gonna look like as a as a public space when it's developed. The other thing I will mention, and then I'll be glad to answer any questions, and and like I said, y'all have covered a lot of this, so I will try to be very brief. We're talking about, uh, essentially twenty lots or the equivalent, twenty lots donated for public space out of, um, by the developer's estimation of roughly, I I come up with about twelve hundred to uh, twelve fifty total lots in the Glenbrook devel- development. I understand it is a burden in one phase of it, but we're talking about the context of being the the overall development. And we're talking about twenty lots in the context of that and essentially land by their own statement that I would say excluding the four lots that they wanna develop, those other sixteen lots are land that they don't really wanna develop anyway, or don't find it economical to develop. So, um, I'd be glad to answer any ques- questions at this point. Just ask that you recognize that you have a goal to create public green space, and your opportunities to do so are, um, with this development seem to be slipping away because this park has moved, if you'll recall, at least four times in the overall scheme of the development. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Duke? Do we have a motion or do we wanna?
Mr. Chairman, I I move that we table this and appoint a committee to review with, uh, Mr. Rice. See if we can come to something we'll all be happy with.
There is a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor of tabling this signify by raising your hand. Are there any, all opposed, like sign? All right.
You want me to decide now on the committee or just call people and let them know they're on? You want, no? Well, we've got three. You wanna be on?
No, not this one.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
Mayor, you on? Okay, Mr. Hall.
And Jean and and Chief, all right. You got that, that's, we're gonna have Mr. Johnson?
Well, we can't have, what, I think three is the limit, isn't it? Three's good. I know we had a public meeting, if, all right.
The next order of business, Mr. Bowles, will you read in Tower Run for me, sir?
Yes, sir. Whereas Stone Martin Builders is developer of Glenbrook subdivision phase four through seven, is this right?
The the, um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Tower Run.
Tower Run.
Number two.
Number two.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
All right, be safe. Thank you. Whereas Edward J. Kelly, is that the right one?
Yes.
Is the owner of, um, Hightown LLC and the is a developer of the new Tower Tower Run in Upper Kingston. And whereas the development has requested for time to extend of a one additional year, and whereas the primary plat was granted a time extension one year on September nineteen nineteen, two thousand thirteen, now therefore be resolved that the city practical planning commission hereby gives its approval to extend the time of the completion of the appropriate plat to New Tower Run at Upper Kingston. Now therefore be resolved that the, um, continuance of June seventh, two thousand seven, primary plat approved remain in effect. I so move.
All right. Discussion?
Mr. Newman, are you getting on with it?
Come on up and talk to, I didn't realize he was here. I apologize, sir. It looked like everybody had left and I didn't look up, sign in for me.
My name is Mark Newman. Uh, one thing I need to correct, I think it says the owner is Edward Kelly, he's not the owner anymore.
Okay.
My father-in-law, uh, Dorsey Hightower is the owner. Um, so that was, we purchased the land back in two thousand seven. Uh, we had everything developed, ready to go, and that's when the housing market just kinda collapsed. And it's taken a while for it to get back. Uh, my father-in-law is very, um, particular on when he goes to spend his money, that he would like to have all his ducks in a row. And when he saw, you know, the price of how much it would cost to put this in, and with the housing market being really slow, he was not as eager to, um, you know, develop it until we had a contract to at least buy half the lots. We had nineteen lots, uh, six acres. Maybe Stone Martin maybe will make it a park or something, I don't know. But he wants to make sure we develop it, you know, and not, the land is paid for, we don't have any kind of financial hardships, but he doesn't wanna get into a financial hardship by just developing it and selling a lot here and there and all that. Uh, so we're, we've had contracts on the property. They've, uh, D.R. Horton looked at it, had it under contract. Uh, we've had other local builders look at it, but we can't get the commitment from them to to buy that many lots. And, uh, so so that's why we keep requesting every year. We are this year, I I'm an engineer, I'm a civil engineer, I do subdivisions all over Georgia, and, uh, and so I'm I'm looking at ways of kinda cut cost on the development. And we've been talking to the city engineer about some ways of doing that, so that's kinda what this time extension is. What, how can we sharpen our pencil to to save some money and basically give me a year to talk my father-in-law into doing it? But, uh, you know, he's got the checkbook, so I can't do anything but talk to him about it, so. So if you got any questions, uh, that's that's basically where we are at this point, so.
Mr. Duke, as I remember, we like this because of the potential to solve some training issues that it offers us.
Absolutely.
Do I remember that correctly?
You remember that absolutely correctly, Mr. McCully.
And if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Go ahead and tell you that, uh, we would request that you approve this extension, um, for no other reason that it offers a great opportunity for the city when it is built. Mr. Newman is correct, the city engineer and and Mr. Newman have spoken. We know some some details on whether or not the their proposal will work. But we don't wanna lose a an opportunity, and we don't wanna require them to go back through a public hearing unnecessarily to for reapproval of preliminary plat, this extension is in order.
Joel, just a minute, how many times has this been approved?
The original preliminary plat was two thousand seven. So we're looking at, this would be the, uh, sixth time, seventh time, excuse me.
Yeah. Of course, it's just with the rest of the people, well, we made a rule, I thought, one time. Or maybe the third time, they're gonna have to do something about it. And if we keep doing this, it's just gonna get deeper, but I understand that situation too.
Yes, sir, uh, what what you started to look at is, Mr. Newman alluded to, and y'all well know, um, the the housing market changed quite a bit in in two thousand seven. And there there are other potential developments sitting out there that have decided not to to move forward. Uh, we have, y'all had a an opportunity to start looking at those kinda critically. You made a policy where you would look at them, um, you would not automatically consider them.
Right.
I I think that's a wise policy. Um, in this case, um, unlike some others, we're we're happy to 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 recommend approval, because the the drainage issue that exists there is one that we inherited from the county when this area was developed.
I see.
And and I think it's a a good opportunity to keep this one alive.
Okay. You want more discussion? Then we approve it. Okay. Okay.
I'll say.
All in favor? Opposed, like sign? Is there any other business that somebody would like to discuss with us at this miscellaneous meeting adjourned?